Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Monday study session of the Pierce County Council. It is Monday, June 10th, 2024. The time is 11:00 a.m. All members are present except for Vice Chair Campbell, Councilmember Denton, and Councilmember Morrell. All are excused. Item number two is review of the June 11th, 2024 council meeting agenda. Ms. Long, good morning.
Good morning, and thank you. This is tomorrow's amended meeting agenda for your regular meeting. We will start with your consent agenda. For introduction and scheduling, you have two ordinances. The first is O 2024-528, and this is amending Chapter 17(c)(60) of the code. This is the International Fire Code. This is for referral to CDEC, and you'll be setting the final on that one for July 23rd. The other ordinance is O 2024-529. This is authorizing the prosecuting attorney to commence condemnation proceedings. This is related to the acquisition of real property for Road Project 5965. This is the 264th Street East mile post 2.3 to 2.5. And this is for referral to EIDC. You'll be setting the final on this one for July 16th. Under resolutions, you'll see first off, a strike through on Resolution 2024-170. As you know, we, the council, took care of this issue by emergency resolution last week. So this, our 2024-170 is no longer necessary. Next addition to your consent agenda is our 2024-172, and this is approving the homeless housing program funding recommendations of the Human Services Department and the Homeless Document Recording Fee Advisory Group. This is for referral to Health and Human Services, and you'll be setting the final on this one for June 25th. And the last for scheduling is our 2024-173. This is approving the Puget Sound Taxpayer Accountability Account or APASA funding recommendations from the Human Services Department and the 225 Advisory Board. This is for referral to Health and Human Services. And per the conversation at Rules, it looks like the final will be set for June 25th. And so because this is an addition, we'll just show it highlighted. You won't see the strikeout. But with approval of the council, that will be June 25th for final. Under D, Action on Grant Applications and Awards, you'll see our new process listing the grants on your agenda with the notation pending review at the June 10th, Monday study session. That will be today. So Mr. Bokey will brief you on those shortly. Under Other Items, you'll see a motion confirming the selection of Chip Vincent to serve as a deputy hearing examiner. Moving now to Section 7, you have two proclamations, actually, one proclamation and an apocclamation. The first is proclaiming June 11th as a Women Veterans Recognition Day in Pierce County, and that was requested by Councilmember Herrera. The other is apocclamation proclaiming June 24th as Pet and Service Animal Appreciation Month in Pierce County, and that was requested by Councilmember Denton. There are no resolutions on tomorrow's agenda, and there is one ordinance. That is O 2024-523S, and this is amending Section 448-020 of the code. This is related to special revenue funds. This received a due pass as substituted at Health and Human Services on June 4th. And those are your agenda items for tomorrow afternoon's regular council meeting.
Thank you. So, members heard that there'll be a revision to the consent agenda for Resolution 2024-173. The proposed final action date would be June 25th. There'll be a, I have a couple of other things to bring up, but before we do that, let's go to other members first. Councilmember Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. I'm glad that Councilmember Denton walked in. It was relating to the apocclamation. I know we're going to have animals here, at least in theory, that's the plan. And I was wondering about the order of possibly doing the one with the service animals first, and then moving to the women's veterans, just so that the animals can leave. They're probably not interested in the rest of our business, so.
I think that's a brilliant idea.
So, but I didn't know, Councilmember Herrera, if that would impact any of the people you had coming for yours? Okay, if that's feasible to do, just on behalf of the puppies that are invited.
Thank you. And for the record, Councilmember Denton is here. Councilmember Denton.
I was just going to add to that, just so you all know, we're planning on moving this table, I don't know, somewhere. If that sounds like a good plan, I will entertain other ideas, but so that we can have the dogs in front, and maybe we can come down for the picture, because obviously, if they're back here, we're not going to be able to see them. So, well, they can hop up, yes, I don't know. And we're going to have some of the seats reserved, so we can kind of spread the dogs out for obvious reasons. And we have some really cute doggy bags that were provided by our Parks Department, so it should be a lot of fun.
Great. You got that, right?
Yes, I got it.
Great. It was handed off to me on Thursday, and I have no idea what this is for. I'm glad we figured it out.
Yeah, really, really, really fun. It should be a fun day.
Thank you for your organizing, Councilmember Denton. So we'll go ahead and reorder the proclamations and take them in that order that is suggested. Any other questions or comments about tomorrow's regular meeting agenda? I'll bring up two things. The first, maybe, Mr. Taylor, sorry to put you on the spot. We're beginning to get a number of grant, a number of competitive grant program requests for final action by council. This brings up the question for me, can you remind me where we are in evaluating all the various competitive grant programs to tag them with our Notice of Funding Availability process that council created last year? Where are we in doing a review and seeing which NOFA processes go through that process versus that, a different process?
Correct. So, as council will remember, you did recently modify the code as it applies to the Housing and Related Services Tax to make that clear that it's subject to the NOFA. Most recently, there's been discussion about the Behavioral Health and Therapeutic Courts tax being subject to the NOFA process. A bill was drafted in that regard, but has been delayed pending the submission of the Behavioral Health Improvement Plan legislation that Human Services is currently working on. So those two items immediately are the ones that have been looked at. There's additional work needed on, as you're pointing out, Mr. Chair, on the other taxes that potentially could be subject to that NOFA process. So it's on the work program, but I don't have a current schedule for you, but I'll get you. I'll follow up at our next study session and get you some certainty on a timeline.
Thank you. That'd be helpful. Thank you for that, and I don't know if, well, I don't think you're, anything else on that? I'm going to switch topics. Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Thank you for the next steps there. I wanted to go to other items on the consent agenda. There's a motion confirming the selection of Chip Vincent to serve as a deputy hearings examiner for Pierce County. Ms. Long, can you further elaborate about this recommendation?
Jeff is here, and he's really the point person on that.
Thank you. Mr. Cox.
Yes, Chairman, all members of the council, Jeff Cox, council staff. Chip Vincent is, the motion would approve Chip Vincent as deputy hearing examiner. He was recommended by the hearing examiner, Bob Mack. That's the process we have in our code. He's a former county employee, worked at Planning Department, and is well familiar with the various ins and outs of the development process. And that's, he came highly qualified and recommended. And I think you can, if you'd like people to, if you'd like Bob Mack to be available to talk to you, I'll make sure he gets an invite for the meeting, if that's necessary.
Anybody have any questions about this decision that's on our agenda? I just wanted to make sure people were tracking and see that it is a decision point. I know Mr. Vincent has followed his career. I think he is eminently qualified, but want to make sure everybody understands this motion that will be on our agenda tomorrow. Councilmember Morrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate you highlighting this issue. Mr. Cox, how many deputy hearing examiners do we have now in our fold?
We have four now.
And how, how is the work divvied up to these individuals? Because we have a regular hearing examiner, and then?
We have a regular hearing examiner, and then we have the four deputies. And the way we've got the system set up is that we, for instance, have one of our, one of our deputies is basically relatively infrequently available, but he's still in the system in case we can use him and need him. This is, we're essentially trying to build enough capacity to get the cases done in a timely fashion. Sharon Rice and the others, most of these folks have other clients. So it's a matter of the hearing examiner, if he can take them, he takes them within the context of his availability. If the, if he can't, or it's, he's overloaded, then he tries to pass them on to the other hearing exam, deputy hearing examiners, and that's going to be based upon their availability. And like I said, some of them have more than less, and sometimes there's conflicts in the time period. Because the way that, the way the system works, for us at least, and it seems to work that way for others as well, is there's a kind of peak in the middle of the various times of the year. And so they need to have the capacity to get people to hear cases when all the other organizations out there that hire these people are needing them as well. So we've got, that's why we have this excess, we have the capacity that we have to try and basically keep up with the caseload.
Okay, and I know you've been working diligently on to, you know, to get this, the hearing examiner stood up, per se, and to make sure that we have capacity. How are they compensated, the deputies?
$200 an hour.
Okay, so it's?
Yeah.
They're kind of on some, are they on retention, or?
It's, some are on contract and others are extra hires, but it's the same price for both. And.
Thank you. I know that, as Chairman Melo said, Mr. Vincent is very knowledgeable about Pierce County and followed his career also and was disappointed when he left.
Okay.
And I think he went to Renton, but Chip was always a good ally in the department and was very professional. So I think this is a good move. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for those questions. Any other questions about the agenda? I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two grant authorization requests for tomorrow's meeting. Let's review them before we concur on placing them on the agenda. Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Chairman Melo, Paul Bokey, council staff. The first grant that you have in front of you is a drinking water rehabilitation and consolidation grant. It is from the State Department of Health. The due date of the grant is July 1st, 2024. The requested grant amount is going to be $305,000. This grant is intended to improve the delivery of safe and reliable drinking water to communities served by the struggling or failing public water systems impacted by environmental, technical, financial, or managerial challenges. Planning Public Works would use this grant to support the development of an expanded water utility and infrastructure improvement for the Kapousen Water System. And I can't say too much about the Kapousen Water System, but this has been an ongoing issue. And I believe the county, the county received this as part of state law or something like that. So we have, I believe, three individuals who can speak to this on the line. Karina Hayes, Steve Hartwig, and Dana Larson from our Planning and Public Works Department.
Thank you. Steve, should we start with you? What do you have to add on behalf of the department?
Yes, Chairman Melo, thank you, and members of council. We are running this in parallel with council's consideration of the expansion of the water utility. There's an opportunity that State DOH has with this funding, and it's unlike other grants in that they don't normally, this one isn't, have a set deadline. We put July 1st because we're trying to get in as soon as possible. It's a, it's a first come, first served grant opportunity. It's to support the county looking at the intent of taking over Kapousen. It provides the funding, and I believe the scope of work describes the things that we are asking to include in that grant. And we can elaborate on those if council has questions. But we wanted to run this in parallel, and if, if for some reason the utility wasn't considered, then we just would not receive the grant funding. But we are trying to get this revenue in to help support the efforts that we are trying to accomplish with the expansion of the utility and operating Kapousen. So Karina has a lot more information about the specifics of the grant requirements, and Dana can answer, you know, the fund source or fund revenue questions where we put it into the budget. And we did do a presentation to the EIDC last Thursday about this, and this grant was listed as one of the funding components that we were looking forward to as an opportunity.
Well, thank you for that further introduction. Questions or comments by councilmembers? Councilmember Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the connection to the water utility that makes more sense now. My question is just around the, that particular water utility as it stands. Can it, will it be able to expand service if we take it over, or is it still?
It's, it will take some additional effort. This is to get it sustainable. Some of the items that we put in the scope of work, for example, were for a replacement filtration system. There was a sand filtration system in there that had failed or been taken offline. We wanted to put that in to make the water more reliable. What we need to do to determine if we can add additional connections is the, the, the study analysis that we've talked about as part of the water utilities expansion, being able to move forward with some analysis of whether or not we could add systems, or excuse me, add connections. The water source is something that we still need to do a little more evaluation of. And in a longer range, the plan was to look at alternate sources for Kapousen. Again, that's, at some point, ways in the future, that's where the wheeling of Chambers Creek Properties water could support that at some time in the future. But all of those things are going to be, need to be looked at and analyzed in order to determine if we can take on additional connections. This grant and the specific scopes of work in and of themselves won't allow us to take additional connections at the moment, but the utility expansion consideration that council is going to be looking at, as well as this grant funding, will help us move forward with some of that analysis. One of the parts of the scope of work is to do the rate setting, to do the evaluation of the water code, put together those, those things that we need to put into Title VII to manage the utility, but also to do the evaluation of the system itself and be able to determine if we can take on additional connections. We are aware that there's a number of properties out there that would like to connect, and at the moment, our limitation with the state is that we can't add anyone at the moment. So I know that's a lot of words, and it doesn't really, the grant itself won't get us there, but it gets us on the way to getting there. It makes it more sustainable and reliable so that we can consider adding in the future.
Okay, and so this would use grant dollars to get us set up for the next step?
Correct.
Instead of the county funding. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Do you have any other questions? Thank you for providing the scope of work. It did help eliminate what we're trying to achieve here. Helpful background information.
Absolutely.
I don't see any other questions on this one. Thank you, staff, for making yourself available. Mr. Bokey, True Blood Phase 5?
Thank you, Chairman Melo. The next application is True Blood Phase 5, and this is True Blood Court. It's a U.S. District Court in Seattle. It is a long-running case. You can tell by, this is the fifth round. And this, the due date of the grand, this application is this week, June 14th. The True Blood Court is soliciting proposals for Phase 5 on providing housing and related supports to True Blood class members. Housing and support services must support a temporary to permanent housing pathway. Goals and priorities include the following in providing services solely to True Blood class members. Prevent deeper involvement in and recidivism in the criminal legal system. Reduce demand for competency services. Minimize harm inflicted. Utilize the least restrictive environment. Address inequities impacting groups overrepresented in the criminal, legal, and competency services systems. Prioritize and stabilize higher utilizers of competency restoration services and support. That's, that's quite ambitious goals there. Pierce County is proposing to subcontract the majority of funds for permanent supportive housing, style housing, and residential support services, which may be provided onsite or offsite with transportation for True Blood class members. This is a $12 million grant request, so it's very, very large. The documents supporting this, this coming from the court indicate that there's up to $100 million available. And Ms. Trish Crocker from our Human Services Department is here to speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Bokey. Ms. Crocker, welcome. Thank you for being here. Anything to add on behalf of the department?
We are just, the one thing I wanted to say, and Devin Isaacson, who is one of the supervisors in the homeless division and very familiar with housing. Permanent supportive housing is how we needed it there originally, but we have just, we've realized that enhanced transitional to rapid rehousing is actually a more accurate description of the model that we will be using, where class members will be able to stay up to 24 months in the transitional style and up to an additional 24 months for the rapid rehousing that will help the, and will be getting housing navigation and other support services, including connections to behavioral health and Medicaid-covered services to help them to be able to be, for full restoration and be able to hopefully divert from the criminal justice system.
Thank you. Questions or comments about this grant application? Councilmember Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. In reading through some of the work, I'm just curious about the case management aspect of this. Is that part of the service we would contract out? That seems like an important piece in this work.
Yes, yes, that will be, so there's three main components to this. There's the actual housing being provided, the housing navigation, which we're separating out from the other supportive services. And the supportive services will include case management as you would have with rapid rehousing and almost a permanent supportive style case management level is what we anticipate.
Okay, and then my second question, is it feasible, needed, wanted to have a letter of support from the council or not appropriate with this particular grant?
So for these letters of support, we are actually going to be requesting from the clerk of the court and community organizations who are providing services to individuals with mental illness.
Perfect. And then my last question is just a curiosity. I hadn't seen this flagged on a, it says there's an oral presentation. Ms. Crocker, are you going to be presenting on behalf of the department? Do you bring, like, how does that work?
I believe that Margot Bernison, the Behavioral Health Division manager, will be presenting on this. She's unable to attend today because of a previous meeting, and will be able to answer more of those questions. And I believe Devin will be able to be there as well. And I would be available if requested, but I think that they are more the subject matter experts on this than I.
Okay, perfect. Thank you both for being here. Excited and hopeful with this grant. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Crocker, I'm sorry if I missed it, but the grant name is titled True Blood Phase 5, which implies there's phases one through four. Have we, have we applied and, and been successful for previous phases of this program?
So Pierce County has applied for this in the past. We were funded through Phase 1. The Executive's Office actually applied for it. And that was true diversion services and was coordinated through the Superior Court.
So we applied in Phase 1 and were successful in Phase 1?
Yes, and this, and the focus of Phase 5 is housing and supportive services, not the court-related diversion. Sorry for interrupting.
No, thank you. Is a likely partner, first, we're hearing if successful, we will do a notice of funding availability, look for a partner to do the housing, the housing navigation, the supportive services. That may be one or more providers doing those various services. So someone like a MDC or a qualified partner like that, is that who we would imagine would be a likely provider who would at least respond, understanding it would be a competitive process?
Yeah, we would be looking for partners who are experienced in providing housing for appearing, for persons experiencing chronic mental health issues and, and helping them to become more housing stable, yes.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands. Thank you for making yourself available and for pursuing these resources for this vulnerable population. Both of these grant application requests will be on our consent agenda for consideration to authorize tomorrow. If there's nothing further, we're going to move to item number three, which is review of committee agendas for the week. Ms. Long?
Thank you. So this afternoon at 1:30, there is a Public Safety Committee meeting. On your agenda is Ordinance 2024-524. This is adopting a new Chapter 957 of the code entitled Endangerment with a Controlled Substance. This has a June 25th final hearing date. Then there are three presentations scheduled, however, I'm of the understanding that Mary Robnett will not be available this afternoon, but I will go through these anyway. So we have the wildfire preparedness with emergency management. Jody Ferguson is the presenter there. And then the next two are scheduled to be with the prosecuting attorney, crime rate trends, and also the Blake legislation and local impacts. So those are your agenda items for this afternoon. I don't know, it's my understanding, too, that there's a possibility of continuing the proposal. Leave that to the chair of the committee for that.
Before we move on, Councilmember Herrera.
Mr. Chair, just wanted to talk a little bit about, since the prosecuting attorney, Robynett, won't be here today, and she's an integral part of the ordinance that's going to be presented. I was looking to postpone moving it forward so we can get all the information. So just letting people know.
Thank you, Councilmember Herrera.
All right, tomorrow, June 11th, beginning at 9:30, of an Economic and Infrastructure Development Committee meeting. There are four presentations on that agenda. First is the ARPA Economic Development Program Update. This will be with Economic Development, Betty Capastani. She's actually the presenter on all these, so I won't say that four times. Next presentation is the Arts Program Report. Then you have the 2023 Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and Tourism Promotion Area Report. And last is the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Future Projects. Tomorrow at noon is your regular study session, and I've just seen the usual agenda items here. And at 3:00 p.m. is your regular council meeting. On Wednesday, beginning at 1:30, you have a select committee on homelessness. And there are two presentations. The first is the Comprehensive Plan to End Homelessness Update, and that will be with Devin Isaacson from Human Services. And the other is a Stability Site Report from Heather Moss of Human Services. Also on Wednesday, beginning at 9:30, is a special meeting of the Flood Control Zone District Executive Committee, and you'll receive that agenda separately. And so that is the meeting schedule for the remainder of this week.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Questions about the meeting schedule? Thank you, Ms. Long. Questions about the meeting schedule for the rest of the week? I don't see any. Thank you. Item number four is Discussion of Administrative Items. Turn to our Chief of Staff, Julie Murray.
Good morning, Julie Murray, Chief of Staff. The only item I have to note is tomorrow, after Tuesday's study session, we normally have our monthly birthday celebration, and since we have no one this, who has a birthday in the month of June, we converted that to a meet and greet with our new staff. Erica Rett-Hunt started today, and I think she's been here. There's a picture up on the Zoom wall. But we will, we'll also have our two interns. They actually also started today, but today is mostly with Human Resources. Their first day in the office will be tomorrow. That's Nina Hasani and Tyler Zamara. And so, we'll just have some tasty treats, and you'll get to meet them. So, I hope you can make it. That's all I have.
Thank you. We'll have more time to welcome our new team members, but since Ms. Rett-Hunt is here, welcome to the team, Ms. Rett-Hunt. We're excited to have you and your expertise and capacity, and we look forward to meeting our summer interns. We're going to do some, we have some really interesting work planned for our summer interns. Thank you to the staff members who are providing some mentorship and, and support to all these new individuals. Okay, we're at item number five, Other Business. There is a, at the end of the study session packet, as always, there's the expanded schedule, looking out about 60 days or so, little less. But you can see the expanded schedule, and you can also see the legislation that's been received in review at the end of the packet. There's a letter of support being requested of us by Pierce Transit to the Washington State Department of Transportation for dollars to further support the frequency and span of service improvements along SR7. This is our new stream service, which is more of an express bus service. So, the letter is in the packet for review. Again, the dollars would be dedicated to helping to improve that stream service, more frequent service than we even have today, and more span of service. So, earlier in the morning and later into the evening is what that means. Questions or comments about this letter and any objection to sending this letter to the State Department of Transportation to support our partners at Pierce Transit? Councilmember Kruber?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I'm interested in understanding how we will measure the claim that it will greatly reduce traffic congestion in the area. I don't know that it being classified as a higher-quality service equates to a reduction in traffic congestion. How will that be measured so that we know the investment is doing what it's claiming?
Well, ask Pierce Transit to follow up. They've spent a lot of time and money studying the corridor and bringing this service to the corridor and how it will help alleviate congestion along the corridor. So, we'll have Pierce Transit follow up.
Thank you.
Any other questions or objection to sending this letter? I don't see any. Ms. Murray, please proceed on our behalf. Any other business by other members? Ms. Long or Ms. Murray, any other business for council?
Not today, thank you.
With no other business before the Pierce County Council at Monday's study session, we are adjourned.